I think we're, I've got 3 o'clock on my watch. Commissioner Minor, you make quorum for us. Thank you. We had Commissioner Dozier, is she still with us? Yes, thank you. Hey Commissioner Dozier. Okay, because we have four of us, I know Commissioner Jackson's running a little bit late. I'm not sure Commissioner Proctor and Commissioner Maddox should be on any minute. Okay. We'll go ahead and start the regular public meeting for Tuesday, October the 13th at 3:00 PM. I will do the invocation and then we'll do a quick pledge and we'll get into the meeting. So do pray with me here. Father, we ask your blessings as we begin the important work ahead of us. Bless those elected to serve here. Give us wisdom and good judgment in these uncertain times. Help us make good decisions and to work together in the best interest of all. Thank you for our hardworking staff. Please be with them and with the frontline healthcare workers, first responders, and everyone in law enforcement. We pray for those touched by the COVID-19 illness and their families. As we recognize Breast Cancer Awareness Month, please look over all those fighting the disease and give them and their families strength. Protect them with your abiding presence. And finally, let us lead from our knees with a servant's heart. We ask this in your name. Amen. And then if you'll follow me, we'll do the pledge. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. I have to do my standard pre-meeting reading here. Thank you, Madam Attorney. Under Executive Order Number 20-69 issued by Governor DeSantis on March 20, 2020, authorize local governing bodies, including counties, to conduct meetings without having a quorum physically present or at any specific location. The executive order also authorized the use of communications media technology for virtual meetings such as audio and video conferencing. Executive Order Number 20-69 has been extended by subsequent executive orders, including the most recent, Executive Order 20-246. I will now do a roll call of the commissioners. Commissioner Lindley.
Here.
Hello. Commissioner Minor.
Here, present.
Thank you. Commissioner Dozier.
Good to see you all.
Good afternoon. Commissioner Jackson, in by the bell. Nice move. Welcome. And Commissioner Maddox, thank you all for being here. Okay. For the record, all the commissioners are attending this virtual regular meeting remotely using Zoom as the cloud platform for video and audio conferencing. If we experience interruptions through disruptions or glitches in the technology being used, I will recess the regular meeting until the interruption is resolved. If the interruption cannot be resolved in a reasonable amount of time, I will adjourn the regular meeting. The temporary recess or termination of the regular meeting, if necessary, is to ensure compliance with the Sunshine Law. The county attorney will be stating the procedures to be followed during this regular meeting. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The county issued amended proclamation 2020-7 on April 8, 2020, to modify Board Policy Number 01-05 and temporarily establish procedures for the county to hold virtual meetings as authorized by Executive Order Number 20-69 and extended most recently by Executive Order Number 20-246. These procedural changes were ratified by the Board at its meeting on February 14, 2020. This virtual meeting has been noticed with information for the public to view the meeting in real time on Comcast Channel 16, Prism Channels 16 and 10/16 HD, the Leon County Florida Channel on Roku, the county's Facebook page, YouTube channel, and website. The notice invited members of the public to submit comment until 8:00 PM yesterday evening via the county's online comment forum, and instructions were provided to explain how the public could submit comments. If anyone needed assistance submitting public comments, the notice provided a county phone number as a point of contact. The county did not receive any requests for assistance in submitting written public comments. The comments submitted through the comment forum have been distributed to the commissioners for their consideration prior to any action being taken. These comments have also been posted on the county website so that they can be viewed by members of the public. Comments were received after the deadline, and those comments have been distributed to the Board and also posted to the county website. All comments received will be included in the public record of the meeting. In accordance with the direction from the Commission at the September 15, 2020 meeting, citizens interested in providing comments using communications media technology during this virtual meeting are instructed to register to provide comment by 8:00 PM yesterday evening. Those citizens who registered have been provided information to access the meeting using the Zoom platform as the communications media technology. Mr. Chairman, no further questions.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. So by my agenda, we go to Claudia at this point?
I'll take it first.
Okay, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, commissioners. As we've done since the very beginning of the pandemic, commissioners, as you know all, I'd like to share a brief update with you on our latest efforts related to COVID-19. Like my updates to you in previous meetings, commissioners, you've been getting daily reports from me on the full scope of our efforts, so my update today will be brief. Claudia doesn't have a specific update today, but is available to answer any questions that you might have of her, and as always, we appreciate her efforts very much. Commissioners, first, as you know from your daily updates, we continue to be fully engaged in our public health response efforts, which means that we're still very much working to mitigate the spread of the virus by increasing our testing capacity, coordinating with our healthcare community to assess our hospital needs, to distribute PPE and masks to businesses and citizens, and of course, we continue to drive critical public health messages throughout the community on a daily basis in partnership with the Florida Department of Health. As you know, commissioners, we monitor our public health data on COVID-19 on a daily basis to inform all of our response efforts. At your last meeting, I reported to you that Leon County had not met all of the public health gating criteria contemplated in our plan for further reopening. This continues to be the case, based on the latest public health data from the Department of Health. The most recent data shows that hospital visits, new cases, and test positivity rates all increased over the past week. Those, as you may recall, were all data sets that were decreasing last week, which restarts the clock, if you will, on our monitoring efforts relative to gating criteria. And in fact, new cases and hospital visits statewide increased over the past week as well. However, commissioners, as you all know, our Leon Cares program continues to fund expanded testing and contact tracing in our community. We are testing about 1,200 people per day on average in Leon County, and of course, we do have adequate hospital capacity and ventilators on hand, and we have plans in place to meet any potential surge in our healthcare needs. And in a moment, commissioners, again, I'll hand it over to Claudia, not for presentation today, but in case you have any questions on any of this. Finally, commissioners, at your September 29 meeting, the Board approved several enhancements to the Leon Cares Plan. We've been working around the clock with our team from Ernst Young, and I'm happy to report to you that we have fully implemented all of the enhancements that the Board approved. So far, we've awarded over $13 million across our individual assistance, business assistance, and human services grant programs. In the individual assistance program, we've launched a new round of applications, and households that have already received funding can come back and apply for additional pass due rent and utility bills. We've also opened a second round of applications in the Small Business Assistance Program, and businesses who have already received funding are automatically receiving payments for the award amounts approved by the Board. And we've launched a new nonprofit assistance program that the Board approved at your last meeting, with more than 100 applications already under review totaling about $2 million in requested funds. And of course, commissioners, we continue to aggressively promote these programs throughout the community, including 76,000 direct mail pieces that we will be sending out this week with information about the program. So we're feeling very good with less, with about a week under our belts in rolling out the enhancements. Just wanted to provide a little bit of an update on that. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report, and as I mentioned, Claudia Blackburn is on hand if there are any questions.
Okay. Claudia, anybody, commissioners, questions for Claudia? Yeah, Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I didn't have as many questions for Claudia as I did about CARES Act and where we are right now, but I think since Claudia, you just popped in, thank you very much for joining us, as you do with every meeting since March. This is, we say it every time, a very long haul. It's not terribly surprising that the numbers were still going up. We were kind of on that edge, it seemed like, that they were, you know, we had a spike when school or came back in and started to go down, but there were some other factors a couple weeks ago that we thought it may continue to improve, but it may start to get worse. My question is, is this kind of the ebbs and flows we've been seeing based on gatherings or other issues, or is there any indication that flu season might be starting and having an impact on this, on our numbers?
Good afternoon, commissioners and county administrator. So we have not heard that we've had any positive flu yet in this area, but I will check to see if something has happened that I don't know about. So, you know, we are watching closely, following Phase 3, the opening, to see if we start to see increases. Sometimes we do have outbreaks in various facilities that do add to the numbers a bit, but I can't really tell you of anything significant at this point, so we're just watching closely to see, you know, what happens with cases.
Okay. Thank you for that. I didn't, I hadn't heard much about the flu in our area yet, but I just, you know, wanted to take this opportunity to ask you the question. Is there anything we need to do or could do to help with contact tracing as we move forward? I know that you've increased your staff, but people are still reluctant to participate sometime in the contact tracing process. Is that something we need to focus on, or do you see things improving with contact tracing?
Well, I think you can always encourage folks who have been identified as a case to be forthcoming when the Health Department calls them and to understand that anything they share with us is confidential and handled very carefully. So anything that you can do to help with that would be great. We're definitely contacting people and getting as much information as possible, and our partners at the universities are also assisting with that.
That's great. Thank you. Mr. Chair, as I said, I had a couple of questions on CARES Act, on our programs, just, those were my, I guess they would be two of my standard questions, or two of our standard questions for Claudia, so thank you for that. Ms. County Administrator, I guess I should say, I'm asking these questions mostly because we don't meet again until November, even though I believe you and our staff at OEB and others are already addressing these few issues that we've heard about, but just to bring them out into our meeting, I've heard from two business owners in the last few days that had issues with either a classification of their business and perhaps not qualifying for CARES, and then another one that it was the documentation associated with hardest hit and wanting to submit additional documentation. I know you all have worked through the first issue, and I believe the second issue is in progress, so I have some confidence here that we're going to resolve those, but the classification issue did stand out to me, and I don't remember a discussion really about what types of businesses might or might not qualify. So could you help us understand that a little better? Do we have a set of business classifications that qualify for CARES and then a set that doesn't qualify?
It's most, just about everyone is qualified in terms of businesses for the small business program. Of course, as you all know, I'm saying this more for the, for the benefit of the general, for the public who may be tuning in, but obviously, we have other programs that address other nonprofit sectors and businesses that are classified in other ways according to their tax identification and that sort of thing. But for the businesses in general, and I heard your question going to some of the hardest hit categories that we do identify by SIC code and that sort of thing, I'd like to ask Christina, because she really is the best one to answer this question, and she's been working out these issues as we have gone. I will say the issues have been very, very limited, but Christina could probably best address that specific question.
As she joins us, Vince, and thank you for that. The second question was, I think, just a general business classification, whether or not they qualified for the grants in general. So I brought it up just so we can better understand it and hopefully the public can as well.
Gotcha.
Christina wins best pink today for breast cancer awareness. Wonderful. Thank you.
Oh, yes, Commissioner, all businesses, as Vince mentioned, do qualify for the Leon Cares Program if they've experienced a 25% revenue loss or 25% increase in expenditures, which we anticipate are mostly due to PP and E needs and keeping in their employees safe. When you look at our supplemental award in the hardest hit category, there are certain NICS codes that have been pulled out to, and those are business classification codes set by the federal government, that have been identified as possibly as hardest hit. We've had a couple of outrages from some businesses regarding that category and the changes that the county commission made last at your last meeting, and we're looking to each one of those requests as we speak.
Well, that is helpful. The distinction between the two programs is helpful, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to compliment you and your staff. One of the business owners I spoke to directly very much appreciated your quick follow-up and working with them, so I know this has kept you running for months on top of everything else you're doing, so thank you very much. That's all I've got, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. County Administrator.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. I've got Commissioner Jackson, welcome up. Commissioner Jackson.
Hey, I'll be brief. Noticed recently, Claudia, thank you for everything you do. Let me start with that. Recently, they closed the Home Depot's testing site on the west side of Leon County. Was that due to a lack of, a lack of interested testers or customers, or how did we make that determination?
Claudia?
Thanks for that question, and thanks for recognizing the Health Department, Commissioner Jackson. So the Home Depot was run by, I believe, a private partnership, and the Health Department did not have anything to do with it, but what we do know is that they were, towards the end, they were seeing probably about 100 people a day, from what we could tell from our reports, and the capacity at BRAG was such that it, BRAG could handle that volume. So I would say that BRAG is an option for folks that were going to Home Depot in the past.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I got a, I got a kind of a general question, and I just want to make sure. So the numbers were trending in a positive way, and just recently, they ticked back up, is what we're hearing. Was that kind of?
That's correct.
Okay. And I'm not, I'm not, at this point, but at some point, we got to open the door and start talking about if and when we consider ending the mask mandate. I'm not suggesting that, but I just wanted to talk to Claudia, for instance, and say how, what would be some of the things that we would start doing, and what are other people around the country doing? I know that clearly some people have, and I'm not, I'm not advocating for that at this point, I just want to start having the discussion.
I am not familiar with facilities that have, are, you know, doing away with the mask mandate. It's working. We have very few tools in our toolbox, and it seems to be working. I know in Arizona, after they implemented the mask mandate, the rates came down dramatically, and they are attributing that decrease to the use of masks and social distancing and hand hygiene and staying home when you're sick. I mean, those are the tools that we have right now. Even when we get a vaccine, it's going to be a while before everybody's vaccinated, everybody that wants to be vaccinated is vaccinated, and still, that'll, you know, we'll have to reevaluate then. I'm sure we'll have new guidance as to, you know, the next, what we need to do. But at this point, masks are one of the best tools that we have.
Okay. And I buy into that, but at some point, we're going to have to have that discussion, maybe now, maybe next year, and I just wanted to start. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Claudia, I just wanted to thank you again for everything that you're doing. I know we say this to you every time you come on to the county commission meeting, but those accolades are well deserved, so thank you for everything you're doing. My wife and I went and were retested at BRAG Stadium last week, and it was as quick as it was the first time, so just, you know, we're doing a good job in this community of helping people have free access to testing. I just want to thank you and everyone else associated that. And then, Mr. Chairman, I know you are not advocating for it, you said it a couple times. Yes, and so I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to insinuate anything other than to just say that, you know, we, over the last several weeks, we've gotten more evidence nationwide that the masks are working, and statements from various health experts are forming pretty strong positions based on pretty powerful evidence. So I know you are not insinuating anything, I don't want to infer that, but I think the masks, based on what Claudia has just said and what from what I've been hearing at the national level, is working, and there will come a time when we are able to take them off. I don't like wearing them any more than anybody else, but for now, I think we can be confident that the decision we made months ago was the right one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, absolutely. And Claudia, before I go, Commissioner Dozier's next. Let me echo Commissioner Minor's comments. I got tested last week, it could not have been easier at BRAG. I also noticed the Northeast Library had testing on Saturday, and I can tell you, it was like Chick-fil-A. They were lined up down the street. It was very popular, and I hope we'll do some more of that up in the north side of town, so thank you. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm glad you mentioned the mobile testing. I did note in our update that you've got one coming up this Sunday at the Woodville Branch Library, right? So spreading it out between all the districts, I think that is great, I'm glad we're still doing that. Just kind of piggybacking on Commissioner Minor's question here, I think it's appropriate, certainly, for us to talk about the mask mandate, but I also think that some confidence by our businesses and our community, maybe I should say consistency, is going to help here. So, Mr. Chair, if you feel like we need to have that conversation and get a sense from the Board, do we think this will be months, or are we going to bring it up at the next meeting? That might be something that benefits people, because from my perspective, I think we need to start, or I should say, continue to get people into the posture that we're going to be with masks for a while. The CDC director said exactly what Claudia just said, that masks are one of our only tools and our best tool until we have a vaccine, maybe after that. So I just, I think you hear what I'm saying. We've gotten into the mud, you know, into the weeds on this a lot, and having some clarity about it would help.
Yeah, no, you make a great point, and I, and I think the comment about maybe it will be an ongoing discussion, and I think that, you know, I think as Claudia pointed out, it's one of the few things we know is working for us, so why would you take this away? So, okay. I see no more questions, Claudia. Thank you for all that you do, you've been a rock star and in trying times. So, next up, we've got consent. I know there's a couple polled, but before, so you want me to read this? Okay. All right, before I hand it over to the county administrator to provide directions for individuals who have called in to speak, I want to remind all speakers that although you are not appearing in person, general decorum and civility as set forth in the Board's Rule of Procedures for Meetings is still, are still required, and that any comments or language which are out of order will not be tolerated. Any speaker who violates the rules of decorum and civility will be muted, and the remainder of the speaker's time will be forfeited, just as if the speaker was in attendance at the commission chambers. With that, I'll hand it back to the county administrator.
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, we make these remarks just because we've got three consent items polled, and we do have speakers that have registered to speak on a couple of those, so let me follow up on what the chairman said. Commissioners, at this time, we will, well, in just a moment, we will take public comment on the consent items, once the Board presumably passes the remainder of the consent. But based on the feedback that we received from the Board at the last meeting, we'll then take public comment on agenda items as they come before the Board, as we would normally do in person. Commissioners, prior to the meeting, all registrants have received instructions on how to participate, but I'll do a quick refresher now. So as a reminder to all callers, you'll be identified by your name and asked to provide comment for up to three minutes. For those joining by video, you may experience a few second transition as we bring you into the meeting. When you're asked to speak, you will be added to the meeting, and you'll be prompted to unmute your device if you choose to and to activate your video. Again, you'll receive an automated prompt to unmute your device. Once prompted, please state your name and address for the record, and again, please keep your comments three minutes or less. If we experience any technical difficulties during your call, please bear with us, we'll try to resolve it. If we're unable to get it resolved, we'll move to the next speaker. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you. On the consent agenda, we have three polled items, Item 4, 11, and 12.
You want to go ahead and dispose of the remaining non, the ones that, is there a motion to take the remaining consent items?
Rule of Consent.
Except for, except for one, what were the three?
Items 4, 11, and 12.
So all of consent except for 4, 11, and 12. Motion by Commissioner Maddox, I believe. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Jackson. Any other discussion on those? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, first up, item number four.
Before we, before we, before we, Mr. Chair, just real quick, I was doing a little research, just, are we, Board policy says that technically before, before commissioner discussion and after community input, that a motion is supposed to be made prior to commissioner discussion? So motion second, and then we go discussion? That's policy. I wanted to know, are we going to do that? Are we going to go with discussion, and then somebody makes a motion along the way? Somebody makes a motion? But I wanted to know, usually, I mean, from what the policy says, motion is second is made prior to any discussion on any item.
I mean, it's, it's, we've done it both ways, but it, you want to weigh in, Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, under Board Policy 01-05, Article 7, Thee 2, all motions shall be made and seconded before debate, is what the Board's policy currently provides.
Okay, all right. I know there have been instances, to your point, Commissioner Maddox, where we have done it both ways, where we've let the discussion go on before there ever becomes a motion, but if that's the way we should be doing it, that's fine. Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Commissioner Dozier? Sorry.
We can move on, but this one threw me for a loop here, and I don't want to get us off track right at the beginning. I'm curious, we have done it both ways, and I'm just curious if this is a rule change that you're implementing as Chair based on this conversation?
No, ma'am. It's not, it's not a rule change, this is board policy. And there's a bunch more, but it's just board policy. So the Chair technically can go against what board policy is, but it's board policy.
Like other board policies, it's typically Chair discretion, and we have not typically held ourselves to that particular policy, Commissioner Maddox, when you were Chair, when I was Chair, when any of us were Chair, to my knowledge.
I understand, and I don't want to, I don't want to belabor the point. I don't want to belabor the point, but it's just that when we had the issue about the motions at the end of the meeting, and there's a policy that says that it has to pass unanimously or it has to go to an agenda item, I mean, if we're going to do policy, let's do policy for not, not. Now, I mean, the Chair technically could have prerogated then, but I don't think he can. The board policy is board policy. I'm not going to argue the point, we can do it the way you want to, Mr. Chair, but I'm just saying, that's what policy is, that's what policy is. We're going to be in the gray, we can be in the gray at all times, that's all.
And, Mr. Chair, I was just, Commissioner Maddox, you know me, I love a good policy. I like following the rules and knowing what we are, we're going to do. That's the only reason why I want a clarification, because I was un- And, Mr. Chair, I, I was just, Commissioner Maddox, you know me, I love a good policy. I like following the rules and knowing what we are, we're going to do. That's the only reason why I want a clarification, because I was unclear, Mr. Chair, whether you were going to stick to that policy or not. Thank you.
Let me just make a statement and we'll move on, which is, there are times when it's not real clear what everybody wants to do. And so we do once around and everybody gets a sense before we actually make a motion. I'm not going to stymie that type of discussion. I think frankly, too often we jump in and we get ahead of ourselves and then that, that poisons the well a little bit. So it's, it's a point well taken, Commissioner Maddox, and and you're right, we should probably lean that way when we have the opportunity, but it's not going to be that way always, at least when I'm chair. So having said that, we are on number four.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, item number four was pulled by Commissioner Proctor, the status report on the monument to Confederate soldiers from Leon County at the State of Florida Capitol complex. Uh, we also have a speaker on this item, uh, commissioners. And of course, uh, after hearing from the speaker, we'd be happy to answer any questions. You might have, uh, that speaker, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, is, uh, Robert Holliday. Uh, again, uh, if you are on the call, uh, just a reminder to identify yourself by your name and, uh, you'll be asked to provide your comment, uh, for up to three minutes and you'll be prompted automatically to, uh, unmute your device.
Go ahead, Mr. Holliday. The floor is yours.
Thank you, members of the, of the commission. This is pretty fancy. Uh, my name is, my name is Bob Holliday. I teach American history at T C C and I'm president of the Tallahassee Historical Society and I would love for everybody here to join, by the way. Um, let me say first of all, that the historical society has not taken a position about the future of the Confederate monument. Um, it has done quite a bit of research on it. Over the weekend, I, I sent the county administrator an article by one of our board members and asked him to share it with you. Um, when the monument was delivered to Tallahassee from Philadelphia in 1882, two locations were suggested for it. Washington Square or the Old City Cemetery, where Tallahassee's Confederate dead or buried. It makes sense that the cemetery was one of the options because if you look at the monument, it's clearly a grave marker. There's nothing celebratory about it. There's not a statue on top, nowhere are the words Confederate or lost cause or glory on it. It's really quite somber, something that you would find in a cemetery despite there being a couple of arrows on it. The Ladies Memorial Association, a forerunner of the U D C, which paid for it, instead put it on the east side of the Capitol facing Adams Street, which was the pedestrian entrance to the Capitol and then moved it to the Monroe Street side in 1923, when the old Capitol was expanded, perhaps to take advantage of the growing Florida tourist industry. One aspect of Confederate memorialization, which I think has not been adequately explored, is the extent to which monuments and statues were placed to cause tourists, particularly northern tourists, I suspect, to pass them on main thoroughfares and stop and spend money. The ladies were good at marketing and manipulation. The Civil War has always been amazingly profitable. If you lobby the legislature and get ownership of the monument, and I, and I, I guess that's what you all are talking about doing, one option would be moving it to the Old City Cemetery as some members of the Ladies Memorial Association apparently originally wanted, or putting it in a museum of, of Tallahassee and Leon County history, the creation of which, by the way, is one of the historical society's long-term goals, a little shameless lobbying there. Maybe it could join the statue of Francis Epps if F S U ever allows Epps to come out of his basement again. The big question for this commission, of course, is establishing ownership and whether you want to spend valuable time and effort lobbying the legislature, which might not listen to you. As you will see from the article which I sent, the question of ownership may be a little complicated.
Sir, you have 15 seconds.
Well, I think I'll just stop right there. Um, I, I just wanted to put my two cents, two, two cents, two cents in and, um, and, um, uh, tell you that we will wash with interest on what this, what the commission and, and the state decide to do here. So thank you very much. If anybody's got any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Holliday.
That concludes our speech.
Okay, Commissioner Proctor, I believe, you pulled this?
I did, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Commissioners, uh, our staff and, uh, has brought back to us, uh, following our direction from June 16th meeting, that we would, uh, or they would explore on the interest of this commission, removing those, um, those statues which are on the front lawn of, uh, the State of Florida's Capitol ground. Um, very interesting point that I had not thought of, which Mr. Holliday, Professor Holliday just shared, uh, when he said that the women who may have, uh, generated this, uh, placement, uh, he indicated that perhaps this was a tourist situation and that they were quite good at raising money. And when he said that, uh, that, that, that was really, um, that was painful to hear because not only did was money made off of the black people who were slaves, uh, they were, money was made and they were kept for 246 years. But then even after they legally were not slaves legally, uh, money is still made off of the commemoration of what, uh, it, it sought to lift up and what it, what it's loot. So whether free, uh, so-called free or not enslaved, these people were there making money off of a statue that, uh, I guess you come there and get a, you know, and whatever you do. And the, the persons who were the, uh, African slaves, uh, money was being made off of them both before and after. And that's kind of sad, you know? But what I like, what I, what I'm very pleased about, um, and what our staff has brought back, is that the State of Florida is shamed. They're completely ashamed of these statues. Um, nobody wants ownership of them. Uh, the letters indicate that our staff reached out to the governor, uh, Governor Scott. He sent it to another, uh, person. The Senate President said one thing. Uh, the Florida Historic Capitol Museum said one thing and the Department of Management Services says one thing. We have four agencies where the buck was not stopped and it's a circular argument. Commissioners, I am proposing that this statue over there belongs to Leon County's government. And I am making a motion that we, as a government, go and retain those statues and take those statues from the grounds over there on the state Capitol. I believe that it's time for us to go get the only statue which is a tribute to the Confederacy and for soldiers and persons who were a part of an illicit and illegal act. The State of Florida was a renegade state, as I'm sure Mr. Holliday, who called in just now knows. Florida was not even a part of the United States. It had pulled out. It had succeeded. It was fighting against the United States government. So it was a renegade state, as is pointed out, from 1861 to 1868. Why would this commission, why would anybody in this county feel proud to have a statue that out of 67 counties, we are the only county that has a statue with a tribute to the Confederacy when you know what it means and that we were fighting a war against the United States? I propose it's time to get public works, to go over there and get those two monuments down. The governor don't claim it. Management Service don't want it. The, uh, President of the Senate don't want it and everybody else on this sheet of paper, they don't want it. Ain't nobody name on it but ours. So General Counsel, as an act of replevin, are replevin. We need to go get what our name is on. If I have something in your yard, your yard or your yard, and my name on it, and you don't own it, you're not claiming it, then I'm coming down to get what my name is on. Our name is on that and it's a sad tribute to a sad era where the State of Florida was, had pulled out and was fighting against, it was a terrorist state, a terrorist call to keep my ancestors as slaves down here in Florida in the heart of Dixie. This is wrong, wrong then. It's wrong now. And us county commissioners, we tried to get our county administrator who's done a great job and all he's getting is pushed around. We don't have another county in the State of Florida that has anything like this inglorious statue with their county's name on it, representing them in Leon County. And we shouldn't either. So I offered this motion that we authorize staff to go over there and get those statues, take them down and, uh, take them out to wherever Epps went or somewhere appropriate. And, uh, until the State of Florida, if they want the statue back, uh, call somebody. Right now, they don't want it. Nobody wants to own it. So I was asking in this motion that we tell Leon County to go get our property and take it somewhere. That's the motion.
We have a motion. I don't hear a second. Uh, looks like the motion dies for lack of a second. I've got Commissioner Dozier teed up to speak. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I understand Commissioner Proctor's perspective, passion on this issue. Um, I actually requested this item back in June. I don't think I would have been the only one to do so. I want to be clear about that. I think I may have just, um, gotten there before some of you all did. It was within a couple of weeks of George Floyd's murder and we were seeing statues come down around the country and in fact, around the world, having to deal with the slave trade and slavery, uh, and the Confederate war. Um, I was aware of this statue and the lack of information of it. I think, we may have talked about this a few years ago. Um, some folks had looked into it and kind of got the same round of responses or non-responses, I should say, from the Scott administration. So I don't think that we're in a position to go and take the statue from state property right now. Um, it may be Leon County's, but that's exactly why I wanted to see if we could reach out to the DeSantis administration and get any different answer than we got several years ago from, um, the Scott administration. Obviously, we haven't. So in my conversations over the summer and in the last couple of weeks, two things occurred to me. One, we can pursue the legislative option. I'm not sure we're going to get any other responses than, you know, anything different than what we've seen, um, in this item. And, Mr. County Administrator, I know you and your team worked hard. You, you contacted a lot of folks, um, to try to get answers and I do appreciate that. Um, I have talked to some other historians, um, and particularly, um, Ms. Altamaze Barnes about the statue and, or the monument. Um, there may be a way, if we can't remove it, to add to it, to fill out our history. Um, I know we could sit here and debate, Mr. Chair, whether these monuments and statues should go into the trash bin, should go into a museum or should be preserved. There are people who, you know, have all those different perspectives. From my perspective, wherever it is, what we're really talking about is understanding our full history, the context in which this monument was placed. And that's not included on the Capitol grounds right now. So I think we have some opportunities moving forward as we pursue legislative action perhaps, but also working with our own community. Um, and this is the last thing else, to, to find a way, if we can't move it, if we just keep hitting roadblocks, to do something better with this monument, to enhance it and to really get into the conversation, which I think is where Commissioner Proctor was going. Understanding that Leon County had more slaves per capita than my understanding, any county in Florida. Um, a lot of people don't know that. Um, I learned a lot about history of my hometown when we went through the emancipation day conversation at the last meeting and in looking into this issue. I'm hearing, I'm, I'm learning a lot and I think that is a benefit to me personally, but could be a benefit to all our communities. So I just wanted to add that there's no direction right now. Um, but I think these other conversations may produce some opportunities that we could take advantage on, even if the state just never wants to answer the question or give us the ability to move the monuments, which frankly, might be the most appropriate thing to do. So, um, I appreciate staff's report. I'm sure I'm not the only one. We're going to keep thinking about this issue and I do hope we can, um, bring it back up very soon. I'd like to bring it back up before the end of the year to see if we can, um, find some other way to address this.
Is that an acceptance of the report with that request tagged on top?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion for, to accept the report and I, I absolutely will add to that. Um, I, I'd like to see us come back to this sometime soon, but I wasn't going to make a agenda item request because I think we need to have something to act on and to consider. So to bring it back, if we have some other kind of plan, would that be acceptable to you?
Sure. Yeah, I would, I would second that. I think that's fair. I, I don't want to just sweep it under the rug. Okay, good discussion. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, commissioners, what I would suggest is that our staff has done a good job. They brought back information. They went fishing. They brought back largely nothing. I think that as opposed, uh, to, uh, the, the direction of our letters, uh, that were sent to Ms. Brown and to Ms. Satter and to Governor DeSantis, as well as to the President of the Senate, uh, Bill Gavino, I think that we should put this letter and contextualize a letter with the request, uh, that Leon County, uh, commission desires to remove a statue which captures our county's name. I think it's worthwhile to say that in that letter, this is perhaps one of the most, uh, immoral and one of the most illegal eras of Florida's past, when we were outside the union of our nation, uh, when we willingly fought to keep people as slaves. Um, I believe that, and I'm asking this board, uh, if we can't get a dump truck to go get it, uh, we could take it down tonight. Uh, if we can't do that, then I'm asking this board to consider us immediately restylizing this letter and in this letter, send it to all four of these people and ask them, we want to remove this statue. Are there any objections, uh, from your office? Are any reasons why legally are that you're claiming? So far, nobody is claiming it. And it's that total relinquishment of responsibility over these, these statues that, you know, leaves you like, well, we're just going to let, we're going to let silence, uh, rule the order of the day? Silence, silence is endorsing, silence is backing up this era. That's what silence does. So I make the motion that we allow the county's administrator to pursue a letter to previous parties asked that Leon County be granted permission to remove these statues, uh, misrepresenting what we stand for, what we believe, and we surely don't want our name on our state's Capitol in that way. Y'all could put my name up there if you ain't got nothing else to put up there. And that, I'm not saying that's the highest we got, but it's a hell of a lot higher than the Confederacy soldiers who died. So my motion, my motion, commissioners...
It's a substitute motion, Commissioner Proctor. Yeah.
Yes, sir. My substitute motion, thank you. My substitute motion is that we simply send a letter to ask the previous parties, do they have any objections at all to Leon County removing those statues per our Board of Commissions' request? That's my motion.
I second that motion. I like it.
All right.
Seconds.
We have a motion, a second. I got, okay. And I've got Commissioner Dozier and then Commissioner, or Commissioner Lindley, you second it. You, you want the floor? Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that, uh, Commissioner Proctor's right that, uh, we, and I understand it would be, maybe on down the road, we can find a way to amplify the history and tell a fuller history. But right now, it seems like it's kind of a game of, no, it's not ours, but if it's got our name on it, I think... ours, but if it's got our name on it, I think it would be good to have it back in the responsibility of Leon County. I don't think we're going to get a single solitary objection to that. And then we could determine at least what to do with it. The big problem is we don't really have a repository for these statues. You know, I don't know if you put them in storage until you think of something better to do with it. It's interesting to me that on the topic that nationally, these statues bring out so many, 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 many people and here we've had one professor come talk to us about it today. But I would like, I agree with you. I think it'd be great to get it back. At least it would be in our possession, if not ownership, and we could see if we could find, you know, a likely repository for it. I won't even call it at home, but we, we would need to do something. We would, we can't just leave it in the dump truck, Commissioner Proctor. So I, I think it's a good motion.
Okay, I've got Commissioner Dozier followed by Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chair, I, I was moving a little fast with the options there. I was going to wait for the discussion, but decided to make a motion. I actually referenced going into the legislative priorities, I mean, or, you know, talking with the legislature about this. I just realized it's not in option one, but I assumed that would be our next step. So I am more than willing to add that letter that was included in the substitute motion into the original motion. I just, the response from the legislature in the past has, even to your point, Commissioner Lindley, just asking for it back, they've not given us a response in the past. So I'm just thinking we need to work on the other angle as well. If they never let us remove this, if they never give us a response, or let's just say in the next couple of years, let's pursue both paths at the same time because we need to do something. I do not want this to just sit there without any comments or action. So if we can bring it back in the discussion, but also send that letter that Commissioner Proctor described in his motion, I, I would welcome that and I actually thought that was part of what we were doing before. Could we just have this as a unified motion, Commissioner Proctor?
Yes, ma'am. That's fine.
Yeah, okay. All right. It sounds like most, yeah. Go ahead. I think that gets us, go ahead.
I was just going to finish there that I have spoken with representatives in the Southern Poverty Law Center and this was back in June and they'd actually reached out close to a year ago. They can help communities with monuments and statues and they're more than willing to do that. And they've, they've worked with other communities on this. There's also been a range of ideas of where to move the monument. We just heard the Old City Cemetery. There's been others. Again, that's why I just said there's, you know, different perspectives from a dump truck to moving it to enhancing the history. There's a lot of different perspectives. I just wanted to make it clear, my intent was not to let this drop and we have some others who definitely want to get engaged and help us address this as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay. I've got Commissioner Maddox up. Commissioner Maddox.
Mr. Chair, I was simply going to ask, are you ready for the call of the question?
I think we, I don't have anybody else ready. I think, so we're back, we basically took Commissioner Dozier's original motion and it's amended a few times. Does that make sense where we are?
It does.
Mr. Administrator? Okay. Good. Commissioner Proctor, appreciate the comments. Good stuff. We have a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously by my count. Thank you. Next up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, the next consent item pulled was item number 11, pulled by Commissioner Dozier. This item, Commissioner, Commissioner is proposed revisions to our Leon County personnel policies related to teleworking. We have no speakers, actually we have one speaker on this item and we did receive one written comment as well, which was distributed and posted and of course, will be made part of the public record. So if you like, Mr. Chairman, the speaker on this item is Melissa Vilar. Again, all speakers, I will remind you that you'll receive an automated prompt to unmute your device and once you do that, if you please state your name and address for the record and please keep your comments to three minutes. Melissa Vilar.
I see you're coming in there. You're muted, Melissa.
Okay, I apologize. So this, on item 11, and it may be for a non-agenda item, but the personnel policies, I'm really looking at Chapter 9 Code of Ordinances, Human Rights, to have equity in employment, housing and so forth, because I would like the, I would like the commission to review the employment policies because HEP, CBD has been listed as it's federally legal. It has been removed from Controlled Substances Act and I do feel that there is, you are creating a discriminatory process for pre-employment and random testing as the fact that HEP, CBD is federally legal and no longer a controlled substance. And as such, we should, and not only that, but you have about six other states that through the Supreme Court have said, because the drug-free workplace is not, as long as Supreme Courts have ruled that because an employer does not sell or offer controlled substances or any products to their employees, then they are following the drug-free workplace guidance. It's just, you know, you're not allowing, you know, you're not distributing controlled substances to your employees. So again, it has been ruled that, that local governments may not, companies may not discriminate against an individual for being, participating in the state medical or the state marijuana program. So I do, I would like the commission to review the policy, again, because it's in direct conflict. Cannabinoids in, in HEP and CBD will be traceable in pre-employment and, and again, and I do feel like this, it's affecting recruitment and retainment in Leon County.
Great. Thank you, Melissa. Okay, Commissioner Dozier, you pulled this. You want to talk about, it's yours.
I missed the beginning of what you said there, Mr. Chair. You were muted.
It's, it's, it's all yours. If you'd like to discuss why you pulled it, we can talk about that.
Sure. So I don't think it's germane to this item. I will say that Ms. Vilar does bring up a point that a lot of businesses and local governments are dealing with. That may be something that we need to address in the future if someone has a legal right to a medical marijuana card, but I don't, I don't want to get into that today. The telework item, I did discuss with the county administrator during our briefing and I know that one of the concerns I had is probably reflected in general policy. So this is a new policy in, you know, in light of what we've experienced in the last six months, still experiencing it. I came into it, Mr. Chair, with two questions. One, affirming that this policy would be in place after we, you know, we're in phase three and ongoing and it does not change the circumstance right now because we're in phase two. And that's correct, Mr. County Administrator?
That's correct.
Yeah. So the second piece was, when I read the summary and the policy, I think we, this is a really difficult one. County administration has to have the ability to require employees to be on the job if needed. A lot of our jobs can't be remote. On the other hand, I wasn't seeing a way for employees to have a telework approved for taking care of family, a sick parent, someone like that. And I think one of the things, Ms. County Administrator, we didn't talk about as much was an appeals process or some other process. Again, this is very delicate. I think the first part, the family members is in law, it's in, you know, our human resources policies that we have to follow. I just want to make sure these things are explicit and that we have a way of working with our employees to accommodate different circumstances as they come up. So, Mr. Chair, it was not so much, I think we're doing something wrong, just making sure that we've got all the i's dotted and t's crossed moving forward. Ms. County Administrator, did I, did I capture our conversation the other day accurately, I suppose?
You did, you did.
And.
And then you can make a motion to accept it?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm getting there. So it, it sounds like the provision for family members or others and appeals process may be there, but can we make it explicit in the policy that an employee may read? That was when, when I talked to the deputy county administrator, I wasn't sure if that was explicit in the policy, that employee handbook or something like that.
The, if I could, Mr. Chairman, the way that our HR and our county attorney's office approached this policy was to consider, and the way that they addressed that specific issue, because obviously, we want to ensure that, that people that might fall into that employees, it might fall into that category of having to take care of a family member or something like that were adequately covered. The reason that it's not explicitly here is because that's all covered under our Family Medical Leave Act provisions and, and that is the, the short answer to that. But I've got, I've got Candace Wilson on standby here too and, and of course, Chastity, and we'd all be able to answer more questions. But the short answer being that we didn't feel that they would need to be covered under this provision because they are covered in, in much greater detail, in fact, under the FMLA.
I, I think that probably works for us, Ms. County Administrator, just dealing with large organizations. You have an employee that may reference online material or a particular policy and just want to make sure that we don't have to go hunting for something if an employee is in that situation. So with this last comment, Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to, for staff recommendation, if there's a second.
I'll second that. Yeah.
Thank you. So the last comment here is just going to reflect on one thing I said in the county administrator's evaluation, which I made a very explicit note to say that this is not, this should not be taken as a negative part of the review at all. But there are questions in that evaluation and evaluations we do for other executive directors on other boards we sit on that get into employee management that we don't have information about. In fact, I made the same comment on the county attorney's evaluation. We respect the firewall. We hire two people as a board, our county attorney and county administrator, and they run, are charged with managing our staff. For this reason, I, I think we need to look at our HR policies as carefully as we look at anything else because this is our one opportunity to address those employee issues before we, we let our county administrator go and do his job well as he does. So that's kind of the overriding reason why I pulled this and then I had a couple of questions and I wanted to make that comment because it's in the evaluation and I will be looking at these items in the future as we've always done in the past. Thank you.
Perfect. We have a motion. We have a second for acceptance. As it was, in the consent item, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any, any opposition? Motion carries. Next up, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item seeks the board approval of a maintenance agreement between Leon County and FDOT for the county to formally accept maintenance responsibilities for landscaping on medians along North Monroe Street. The county agreed to assume this maintenance as part of the North Monroe Street quarter revitalization and since the place project, you all may recall, there are, there's one speaker on this item. We also received one written comment on this item, which of course, was distributed and posted and will be made part of the public record. I've just been informed that our caller is no longer with us on this. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you.
Okay. Commissioner Dozier, I believe you pulled this one, if I'm not mistaken. So I'll hand the floor to you.
I did, Mr. Chair. We had a good conversation about fertilizers recently. We've been focused for years on our sustainable product or policies and based on my conversation with county administrator and looking at this item, the landscaping is in. There is a particular landscape plant, management plan that is part of the agreement. Am I right about that, Mr. County Administrator, with FDOT?
That's correct.
Yes. So right now, FDOT has their program, which we, we have to sign on to, but I think we do have the opportunity in this agreement, and I'd like to suggest that it would be standard going forward if we entered into maintenance agreements, that we talk to FDOT about native plantings and reducing our use, if not eliminating our use of fertilizers and pesticides, just doing it in the most sustainable way possible. So again, this is an ask. I, I can make a motion for staff recommendation on this one and add to that that we asked our staff to reach out to FDOT to see what other options we have to amend this management contract memorandum of understanding to address fertilizers, pesticides and native planting.
All right. I've got a motion. Commissioner Minor, you're up. We need a second first before we go any further.
I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner Minor, second. You've got the floor, Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I think what Commissioner Dozier is, is at least commenting in relation to is a citizen comment we got from Danielle Irwin, who had some very good comments about this agenda item as it pertains to glyphosate, you know, roundup as well as fertilizer. And, and based on Ms. Irwin's comment, my chief of staff, Jody Wilkoff, and I did a little bit of back research and in December of last year, it seemed like it was 10 years ago, but we, we had an agenda item on, on the use of glyphosate. And at that time, I, if I go back and take a look, county staff said the use was very minimal, but they're working to reduce it. And according to that agenda item, which was accepted by us, we, we basically are waiting now for the Pinellas County Working Group to come back with a report on how alternative methods to glyphosate could be implemented for their county as well as other counties. Mr. County Administrator, do you have a sense on when that, when that agenda item might come back to us?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, we've been keeping very close tabs on their process. Again, we, we recommended that because it is so exhaustive, but they are wrapping that process up now. We expect early part of the spring, as soon as January, we could potentially have this agenda for the board.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. And then also regarding the use of fertilizer, we had a citizen that was looking into this with the county a few months ago and, and based on a quote from him, you know, with the county, basically the policy is to use fertilizer very rarely and only on recreational fields where there's a lot of foot traffic, a lot of trampling, like on athletic spaces and that type of thing. Mr. County Administrator, is that, is that accurate? Is that true?
Commissioner Minor, I'm going to have to ask you to repeat that, please.
Sure. I have heard from a constituent that had been working with the county on the fertilizer policies. This was earlier this year and he had written an email basically saying that, that the county's policy was to use fertilizer very rarely, only on recreational fields. And when that use was applied, it was really only on areas that had high foot traffic, trampling. Is that, is that accurate?
That, that is accurate.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
So I have a motion and I have a second. And if I understand correctly, the motion included some follow-up, right? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay. We are done with consent, Mr. Administrator?
Mr. Chair, before we move forward, and I hate to be this guy, but I'm sorry. Board policy can't be, is not board, is not chair discretion. If we're going to move forward with just doing things with what we've been doing, I just ask that we make a motion and second to waive the specific board procedure, rule procedure for board meetings associated with the motion and the second before discussion. Because again, board policy can't be, it's not, it's not chair discretion. So if we're not, I ask to, ask everyone to respect the, the policy, but if, if we want to move forward in that way. to move forward in that, in that way, I have no problem with that. I just, I hope before we, we stay in right order and do the motion and second.
I don't, doesn't bother me if that makes you feel asleep better at night. Anybody else want to discuss this? Does that create heartburn for us? I mean, it just basically clarifies what we're doing. Is that right? Go ahead. Yeah, I'm asking the question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, yeah, according to the board policy 01-05, uh, the policy does govern the procedure for meeting. There are certain provisions, uh, in the policy that give latitude to the chair and some discretion to the chair, especially when it comes to the amount of time allocated for members of the public or members of the board at certain times, uh, to, to speak for a certain period of time. Otherwise, the policy is supposed to govern the conduct of the meeting.
So, what you're asking, Commissioner Maddox, if I understand correctly, is to basically clarify the way we've been operating as long as I can remember. Is that?
Y, y, yeah, I mean, there's a, there's, there's a bunch of policies there, and here's my, here's my major point. When we ask citizens to come speak before us, they got three, they get three minutes to speak. And most times we ask them to stick to, stick to that policy, right? That's the policy of the board during our meeting, rules of, rules of procedures. We have our own rules and procedures as board members that, quite frankly, if we, if we, if we know them, we probably should stick to them unless we're going to make a motion to say that we're going to waive them. And there's, there's, there's many more to go, go, go along with it. I mean, we had this whole discussion when we were talking about the idea of at the end of the meeting and the full, the full board having to approve an action that that's made versus the, the whole thing about, uh, agenda items. Like for instance, we referenced Roberts Rules of Order, which states that a board member may only speak twice, and that, that board member only gets a maximum of 10 minutes unless there's a vote to extend by the board to extend that discussion and allow for that person to speak again. And those things non-transferable. I'm just saying, if we're going, if we're going to be policy and we're going to ask our citizens to, to abide by policy, if we know them, which I do know them, I'm just asking that we respect them unless there's a way out of them. We just, we just simply sit here right now and say we're going to waive those, 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 uh, board procedures and give the chair discretion on how he wants to run this meeting. That would be in all things, whether it be the Roberts Rules and say we're going to waive those, or whether it be the policies that we have set that will be outside of Roberts Rules. I'm just saying. Again, we ask citizens to stick to three minutes. I mean, what if they don't? That's, that's all I'm asking.
I, I hear what you're saying. I also worry though that we, this becomes a little bit of a slippery slope because of the way we have operated for a long time and the fact that, you know, we, I'm, as far as I'm concerned, as far as when I'm chair, I let people speak pretty much indefinitely until the, till the conversation winds down. Um, I don't know that if, under your scenario, we'd have to go back to only two, two, you know, only twice or 10 minutes.
Mr. Chair, again, I won't, I won't belabor the point. We want to move forward, we're going to move forward. But there was just, there was just a statement made by Commissioner Dozier that said that we have policy concerning HR and that we have to respect those policies, we have to go by those policies. We have board policies that says that we do these things or we, we use Roberts Rules of Order to, to dictate how we want to run our meetings. I get it. We've done things in the past, but we haven't done them right. All I'm saying is we want to do things in different ways for this meeting and, and start fresh next, or we want to do things for a different way indefinitely. Let's at least make the motion today so we're in right, so we're in right order. So, that it's not hypocritical for us to ask for a citizen, again, to, to speak for only three minutes, and we don't respect our own policy. So, I, that's all I'm asking. I mean, I, I don't have a problem, I'm just saying. I won't say no word about it, I'm just, I'm just asking that we do that.
Yeah, I'm not arguing with you, I'm kind of curious. Commissioner, uh, Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't want to have us go down the, the rabbit hole of, of process today. We've got a long meeting, I know, ahead of us. Uh, we've got the public hearing at 6:00 PM. I will say that I think there's a lot of value with what the traditional approach has been and what Chairman Deloche has, uh, implemented, having, on, on big items, uh, at the discretion of the chair, doing a round robin of all of us. Um, I, I think, uh, I like the idea that our county commission listens to each other and listens to citizen input, um, often before making a motion. I think there's a lot of value in that. I, I, I think there's value in hearing from each of you on some of these big topics before a motion is introduced. Um, Mr. Commissioner Maddox, I know what your point is, I, I think I know what you're trying to say, and, and I, I respect that.
I'm not trying to say anything. All I'm saying, okay, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion that we waive board policy related to rules and procedures during the board meeting and give you discretion on how you want to run your meeting. That is my, that is my motion. That's all I was asking, is that we make that motion so we're in right order. It's all I'm asking.
Commissioner Maddox, we, Commissioner Maddox, uh, we had an agenda item three or four months ago where we discussed this, and, you know, we, the decision was made by, as a body, I, I know you're shaking your head, Commissioner Maddox, but the decision was made at that agenda item that we don't originally adhere to Roberts Rules.
Rick, it's in, it's in the, it's in the, it's in the actual rules and procedures for our meetings that if there is no policy stated for an item, for, for something particularly in rules of procedure for the board, that we, that we use Roberts Rules of Order. Again, I'm not here to argue. All I did was just make a motion that we give Brian the, the ability to run his meeting the way he wants to run it. All I want is a second so we can move forward.
And I'll, and I'll, and I'll second that, but I've got, the county attorney wants to weigh in on this too.
Point of order.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Dozier already seconded.
Okay, all right, thanks. Yeah, thank you.
But for clarification, what Commissioner Maddox is talking about is adherence to the board policy, which is not rules, Roberts Rules of Order. To be clear, what the board did several months ago was that it did not have to strictly comply with adherence to Roberts Rules of Order revised. To, for the board to deviate from its policy for the conduct of its meetings, it would require a motion, a second, and a majority vote of the board, which is the vote that Commissioner Maddox just made that was seconded by Commissioner Dozier.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, basically giving me all sorts of authority. I'm being very facetious, I apologize. That we'll waive the rules, uh, is that for tonight and we do this as we go? Okay.
Mr. Chair, please, just for tonight, because I don't want to go through another discussion, that's all I'm asking.
I'm with you, I'm with you. All right. All in favor of the motion?
Mr. Chairman, could I say something? As y'all were talking, I've just been checking, trying to make sure no flies was on my head. So, if it seemed like I wouldn't, I am checking, you know. Yes, sir, that's all.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any op, any opposition? Okay, I guess I'm in charge then. Okay. Next up, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We are on, uh, non, citizens to be heard on the non-agenda items. We have four speakers. Mr. Chairman, if you like, you're the first speaker on non-agenda items is Earthale Vickers. Again, to all the speakers, just a reminder that you'll receive an automated prompt to unmute your device. Once prompted, please state your name and address for the record, please, and you have Earthale Vickers, do we have Earthale Vickers on? Yes, we do. Calling again, Earthale Vickers. Do we have them on? I'm going to the next speaker, uh, and we'll come back if we need to under this portion of the agenda. Renee Miller. Renee, calling Renee Miller.
Ms. Miller, is there Renee Miller?
Yes, thank you so much. Good evening, Commissioners and Administrators. I'm Renee Miller with CityWalk Urban Mission. I'm the executive director there. I've been doing full-time work with the homeless, ex-offenders, families, and individuals in crisis since 2007. We serve about 5,000 people experiencing crisis and homelessness each year. Thank you to those that responded to the proposal and presentation that I sent, and for those of you who spoke to me prior to this meeting, uh, we did, as a staff, our own independent point and time count, uh, and we, where we identified about 100 people who are living unsheltered and not connected to, uh, a shelter agency. And what we're doing really well with when it comes to homelessness and social services is, um, getting people from, uh, when I say we, I'm talking about everybody in the space of social services, are helping people that are pretty independent on getting some shelter and a fresh start. I know a lot of people are in hotels, but I'm not talking about that population. I am talking about people who have extreme dis-executive function and diminished capacity. There are about 100 people, as I said, in addition to those who are housed, who are completely unsheltered. Over the summer, that was uncomfortable, but probably not life-threatening. As we get into flu season and we're still battling the COVID-19 pandemic, we are seeing, and not only that, we just came out of a moratorium on eviction, so 60 days from now, who knows how many people will be displaced. We have people staying in domestic violence situations. I know that we see the news, and that has had an uptick. People are staying in, um, unsafe situations because there is no place to go. In the capital city of Florida, the seventh largest city in the third largest state has not had a walk-in emergency shelter since March. Uh, CityWalk is stepping up to the plate to do this, and I would like to, this is not, I sent this to everybody in the county, city, everybody in the space to come together and have this discussion. As a pastor and someone who works with these individuals every single day, I do not want to do another funeral for a two-year-old who drowned while mommy did drugs, or a homeless client who dies in Lucky's parking lot, uh, of a heroin overdose. I know those things are going to happen anyway, but we're on the front lines here, and there are, uh, an unseen unhoused population that, um, is really dis-serviced. And so, would like not only the, the blessing of the county to work with us, I'm not, I think I, I expressed this before, I'm that person that just sees a need, and I'm going to go after it, and I'm going to do it, and I don't bring other people into that conversation. Uh, but CityWalk Urban Mission would definitely like to have a seat at the table moving forward as far as being in this space, um, and I want to make sure that, uh, we don't do anything as an organization that the city or county or community is not going to be behind. And so, uh, as we reach out, I would just like to continue to have that conversation, uh, with each of you, uh, or collectively. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Melissa Valar. We are bringing up Melissa Valar now. Just unmute and you'll be recognized. There you go.
Okay, here we go. Um, okay, so, um, let me be quick here. Um, one thing about the, um, the employment too, there have been several employees and applicants who have come, come to me to speak about the, um, the employment discrimination or the, the random testing discrimination. So, I do, I, there are community members that have contacted me directly because of this issue. Um, and, okay, the, the non-agenda items are going forward. Um, and again, um, to piggyback off Renee Miller, you know, 100, 100 individuals are unsheltered, and the CARES Act funding is only helping, has only helped 500 individuals, our individual families. Um, you know, right now, you have so many individuals who are not able to receive assistance because of the 30-hour work requirement or the 20%, the 25% loss of revenue. And loss of revenue is your increased utility bills, your increased medical and health and, and public safety expenses, um, all of these additional expenses individuals and households are facing. And any type of source of, of assistance besides the economic stimulus payment, and again, we're going on four months since, since the CARES Act funding has been distributed, um, to the county. And so, we really need to, to focus on how we can, how we can help individuals better. Um, you know, the, again, a, a discussion board of, of many individuals who are not able to receive assistance, um, based on the 30-hour work requirements or the 20% loss of revenue, which, again, all non-violers, SSI, you know, low income, fixed income, received an economic stimulus payment, um, from, from the feds. And I, we really need to, um, you know, the best way to, to, to curb food insecurity is adequate financial resources. So, we really.
Margie, you have 30 seconds, please.
Okay. And then my other issue, um, is bail reform. Um, jails and corrections, uh, is, is the largest portion of the public safety budget. I would like to know how many people are sitting in jail that cannot afford bail. Um, because, you know, I, I would like to see a, a, a model, a community-based care model that is, is offering a monthly stipend and, you know, to, to curb the gun, the gang and gun violence, but we also need to focus on the non-violent and, and just bail reform and have an ordinance that we remove it, like the city of Atlanta has, the requirement. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. We had, uh, Max Epstein on deck. However, I've been informed that he's not on the line, but we are able to go back to We are bringing up Earthale Vickers now. Okay, it appears that we, uh, do not have them on the line. With that, that concludes our public speakers on non-agenda items. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we go to general business then, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Under 16.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Item number, uh, 16 is a, uh, the, our status report, uh, from the, um, the Leon County, uh, Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. It's their annual report that's brought to you this time, uh, each year. Uh, this item also addresses our joint county-city agreement with the Oasis Center, uh, for women and girls. We are recommending options one and two. And, uh, before you tonight, uh, to speak on this item, we have the chair, uh, of that, uh, group, I believe it is Darby Scott. Let me just see here, I had the note in front of me. Ms. Scott, we, Mrs. Scott will bring you up here in, in just a moment. And again, um, she will speak on behalf of the, um, the, uh, the commission on, uh, Okay, Darby Carrington Scott, there you are, uh, and you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen. Make sure you all can see the presentation. Can you, can you see the presentation right now?
We can.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. My name is Darby Carrigan Scott. I am the current chair of, or actually, I'm just the immediate past chair right now of the Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. Um, so I would like to explain a little bit about our annual report, which you have all received and hopefully already reviewed, and then I'd be happy to take any questions on that report. We selected as our theme for the year, the effects of trauma on the mental health of women and girls, becoming a more trauma-informed community. Um, of course, with the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, the topic of trauma is ever more apparent than we anticipated when we selected this topic in October of last year. And of course, we've seen in many ways, trauma manifests individually in our community and, um, more now than ever collectively in our community as well. And we also, uh, believe through our work on this topic that it must be analyzed and understood in the context of intersectionality, as we know that trauma is exacerbated by many different factors and many different marginalized identities, things like inequality and racial injustice, um, just to name a few. So, I'd like. So I'd like to take this opportunity to highlight the work and recommendation of each of the committees this year, and then I'll take any questions you have. So the first committee I want to mention is the Education Economic Security Committee. And this committee began the year by putting on our Women's Economic Security Summit, which was an event that was two years in the making. At 135 people attend the event, a very successful event. Speaker Phil Duvall, who is the author of Bridges to Sustainable Communities, lead us through an important community discussion on developing a common language and common key performance indicators to create a sustainable community. And then the committee decided that its recommendation would be to implement a risk mitigation fund as a landlord incentive program for mixed-income housing developments in order to increase the accessibility of affordable housing and to applicants who are struggling with housing insecurity. So for those of you who aren't familiar with this concept, a risk mitigation fund is a resource landlords can use and access in order to minimize the potential financial impacts of renting to higher-risk tenants. And it comes very highly recommended by the Florida Housing Coalition. We believe that protecting women and girls experiencing housing instability through this type of public-private partnership will translate to dollars saved down the line by preventing homelessness, certainly a topic that I know you're all addressing based on the speakers that you just heard from as well, and that you've been very focused on. So our belief is that this would increase the stability of housing in our community, decrease homelessness, and save money in the long run. The next committee I want to mention is the Health and Development Committee, which held a webinar panel discussion on the book The Deepest Well by Dr. Nadine Burke-Harris. She is the Surgeon General of the State of California and really the nation's foremost expert on childhood trauma. And we did that in order to educate the community about the long-term consequences of adverse childhood experiences. Highly recommend the book if you've not read it. It's a great read, very informative. We had 35 people attend that webinar, and the committee decided that its recommendation would be to make provisions for the enhancement of formalized mental health and emotional wellness education programs for city and county employees and for community awareness events. You previously made plans, which we are very grateful for, to host mental health first-aid trainings. We certainly thank you for that, and we hope you'll consider expanding those trainings for county employees, with the first priority being employees who are in direct service positions, as well as consider recommending them for community agencies. Again, our belief is that investing in this type of training on the front end will result in more timely intervention, saving human lives and as well as economic, making good economic sense over the long term. And the final committee I want to mention is the Violence and Safety Committee. That committee hosted a screening of the film Resilience: The Biology of Stress and the Science of Hope. We had 45 people attend that screening, and it again discussed the issue of adverse childhood experiences and their long-term impact on health and life outcomes. The committee's recommendation is to implement trauma-informed care training for our local law enforcement agencies. We understand that the sheriff does not operate under the direct, under the direction of the county commission. So we're specifically asking, in your case, that you consider recommending this to the sheriff's office, and we have been in communication with them about that already. This would have, we believe, two distinct benefits, enabling officers who are responding to incidents or engaging with the community to recognize the signs of trauma, work with service providers in the community to respond appropriately. And then it also would have the benefit of helping law enforcement officers address their own mental health needs stemming from the significant trauma they may face as a result of being exposed to various incidents in the line of duty. Again, we believe the investment on the front end would save human lives and dollars on the back end by getting to the root of the issue, ensuring that members of the community are having their needs met and provided with opportunities for healing and keeping our law enforcement officers emotionally healthy and well to do their jobs to the best of their ability. We also believe this would be an important de-escalation tool that would decrease incidence of excessive use of force and improve relationships between law enforcement and the community, and particularly our communities of color that are disproportionately impacted by excessive use of force. So with that, I will be happy to open it up to any questions you may have, and thank you for your time and your attention and your support of the commission.
Darby, thank you so much. Commissioners, questions? Can I see Commissioner Proctor? Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Ms. Darby. I want to thank you for your report and for all the dedicated women who are part of the commission. And in my notes, as I went through this item, one of the things that, as this item seeks the county commission to re-up in amount of, Mr. Chairman, I don't know what it is, but it's something about when I talk at meetings, somebody always shuffles paper. I don't, I'm not sure if that's because I'm talking, but I don't understand why I'm always getting paper in the background every time I talk. But Commissioners, if you have you unmuted on, if you could hold your papers, I would appreciate it. The CSC is asking for $8 million on a ballot measure. The CSWG is down here asking for $10,000. I don't exactly understand, a new CSC at $8 million, that's worthy of $8 million for property tax. But I've always thought that the work of the CSWG is under finance, under money put into, and we have not put the money into relative to the great need, the real status of women in this community. And I admire the work of this report, but this report is really conveyed and shared with us in such a tender, meek, and mild covering that it almost obfuscates the deep trouble that many women are in, the kind of stuff that Mrs. Renee Miller presented to us, the kind of frontline work that Mrs. Miller does, the kind of trafficking that's occurring in our community, rapes and people getting abducted and kidnapped, that kind of stuff, Ms. Darby, is not, 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 unless I missed it or something. I'm respectful for the recommendations that come for risk mitigation, though I don't understand where your money, you got a lot of partners, good partners, outstanding partners, well, community partners. This report is beautiful, it whets our appetite, is good-looking. But one of the policy recommendations is that we enhance and formalize mental health education for city-county employees and for community awareness events. I hope that we could include this recommendation, Commissioners, on page 07 for our retreat because we are foot-dragging and we are not reacting to. And so, also the trauma training on page 08 for TPD and the Sheriff Department, all like that, I don't know about that department, those departments, but I know that to formalize mental health, emotional wellness, I don't even know if that comes under our insurance and if Ms. Candy's department and her insurance companies that we pay premiums to, if they cover that for us. I'm jumping around. I think that the issue of economic empowerment is not captured. I know the women are stressed out. This year was an abbreviated year, but I think that as long as women is paid so much less than men, even though our county administrator did a survey and presented to us that here in Leon County, such disparity does not exist. But I do believe that in the wider market, it does. And I think that economics, Ms. Darby, is just an ongoing continuing thing. It's the economic inequality that this allows women to find traction. The health needs, women and children, children and women, y'all, y'all got to come up with that look and angle. And I think that the economic equities, as well as the WMBE focus, and that when you're aware that contractors in our community can check a box, just say, "I did a good faith." And I mean, every woman business, every black business, all of them can just get excused from participating because a white man company have said, "I checked the box and I couldn't find nobody." And I believe that a part of this focus has to look at contracting opportunities or the absence of contracting opportunities. And then I will close, Mr. Chairman, and just simply say that the amount of money that we, that we're putting up is peanuts relative to the ask for children. But most children have a mama. And if you're asking for $8 million for the children and only $10,000 for the mamas, I don't get it. I mean, I, I just, this, this ask is not consistent with the needs that the CSC, which I do not support, this council, I don't support that. But their research, their research have brought to this commission, presented to the public more than what the CSWG done reported. How you go under-report what's going on with children? It is not captured here. So it feels good, it sound good, it look good, but you ain't asking for enough money to get a job done commensurate to a report dealing with children, and every last one of them children got a mama. And then finally, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's, I don't know if you guys are swimming upstream, downstream, cross the stream, what's, but whether or not there is a womanist theory, theoretic, or a feminist theoretic, or 19th Amendment theory of empowerment, but I don't get a sense of a theoretic that you're operating around, and maybe you're not supposed to. But it has to be something that empowers and that you rotating around an axle of fault. And I just don't get the philosophic side of the organization. But I do commend that it looks good, it's all of that. But Commissioners, we are not putting enough money behind these women, and the reason I say that is that it's juxtaposed to what the CSC findings are relative to the children. And this is totally incongruent to say that women and what we're doing here, what we're asking all of the taxpayers to contribute to over there, something is not, something is, needs to be reconciled. And in this report, it does not do that for me, but I know that this is up and coming, but you got to go to the height and the altitude that I am pointing you to in my comments today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Commissioner Proctor. I've got Commissioner Dozier, followed by Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam Chair, outgoing past chair, I should say. Darby, thank you so much for your leadership and for the incredible work that you and all the members of the commission put in, not just in the last year, but in all the time you've served on this commission. I noted, I had it in my notes here, I'll scroll back up, 11,068 volunteer hours from this commission alone. And I think this report, obviously, you could write a novel or a whole bookshelf of work, maybe a library. But quite frankly, the report that came from the commission in the early years was really dense. It had a lot of information, and it was hard to distill the policy recommendations out of that. It's good to keep that real detailed perspective, you know I love it, but it's also good to drill down and get the exact policies. And I have shared this with you offline, but I'll say it again here for the benefit of the commission, your commission and ours, I suppose. This is the best annual report I think I've seen from the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. It is tight, it's succinct, but it has a lot of information, not just about the diversity of the board and all of the issues that you cover, but really about some key things happening in our community that we should address. So I know you've worked hard on that, and I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you. As I look at the recommendations, I'm going to start from the end and say that when we talked about this a few weeks ago, I was really excited to hear that the Commission on Status of Women and Girls has, is participating in the Citizens Committee for TPD, is that right? And you were reaching out to the Sheriff's Department as well, and we talked about Sheriff McNeil's, the new position he's created that does focus on mental health. And I think for that last recommendation, I really like how you framed it, but I'm very hopeful that, and I believe Sheriff McNeil may have already addressed some of those issues and may be open to that. So I hope you'll continue that conversation with him. I think it is very important for the reasons you described, but obviously, he runs his own shop, so we'll need to trust him to take those steps. For the other two, I'm going to turn to you, Mr. County Administrator, on the other two recommendations, the mental health and emotional wellness education. It seems like we've implemented a lot of different things through our wellness program in the county in recent years. I'm wondering if perhaps now, or maybe at a future meeting, we could get just some information about how our current programs may directly support what the recommendation is from the commission, or if there are any gaps in that that we could look at in the future. I think, Darby, you made a point about employees who may deal with high-stress environments, I'll put it in my own terms. It brought to mind the incredible work our county team has done during four emergency declarations over the last five years. And I hope the community recognizes how many hours county employees spend away from their families during these declarations, typically hurricanes, but certainly right now as well. So, Ms. County Administrator, I think that that's what stuck out to me. Is there any problem with that? Could we get an update on that?
Absolutely. I don't, no, no, no action necessary there. We'll do that.
Okay. And then we can take that from, or take that one from whatever information you provide. The fir-, again, I'm working backwards. So the risk management fund for landlords, this is one that I've actually heard from landlords and realtors in the past, that there is, there is a desire to rent to low-income folks, particularly women and families, but oftentimes there are past issues or there's just challenges with that. So, Ms. County Administrator, is this one that we could turn over to our housing committee to, or based on your guidance, I thought that might be the most appropriate place to see if a policy like this could be developed and how it might work?
Mr. Chairman, go ahead. Commissioners, yes, in fact, we were planning, Commissioner, on preparing an analysis of these recommendations as part of your, as part of your upcoming Affordable Housing Workshop.
That's fantastic. Well, good work to the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. All three of your recommendations have, are in progress in some way, and we'll continue to work on them. Thank you, Mr. Actually, Mr. Chair, I would add in a motion on any of those recommendations, but for the fact the county administrator just said, we're already looking at, we can get the report on the mental health, and we're already working on the other and expect an agenda item. So with that, I will make a motion for options one and two.
Second. We have a motion and a second. I've got- We have a motion and a second. I've got Commissioner Minor up on the floor next. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman. Uh, Commissioner Dozier, you, you have already addressed the points I was going to bring up. Um, uh, and, and County Administrator did too with his feedback on, on your point. So I really just want to thank, uh, everyone on the CSWG for their work on the annual report. Darby, Catherine Register, Kellyotti, LaShawn Gordon, Carrie Boyd, and all the members of the three committees. Uh, thank you very much for your work. Uh, my wife was a member, uh, many years ago on the CSWG. And so I've, I've seen firsthand how much effort and, and, and hard work goes into these reports. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we got a motion, we have a second. Darby, let me echo some of the comments that were made. I was not your biggest supporter when this first came through. I kinda went kicking and screaming and it has gotten better every year. And my hat's off to you. As the father of three grown adult daughters, I'm reminded daily about how important this is. So, uh, thank you for all the hard work you do. Uh, any other discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Darby, thanks. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, uh, this item provides an overview of the proposed 2021 annual retreat scheduled for January 25th. Uh, we received no comments and have no speakers on this item. We're recommending option one.
Commissioner Maddox.
Move option one.
We have a motion. I'll second that. Uh, is there discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item seeks the board's consideration of a funding request from the American Legion Post 13 and the amount of $10,213 to assist with repairs and improvements at the Legion Hall. Uh, annually, uh, commissioners, the county budget's $10,000 a year for the, uh, uh, North Florida Homeless Veterans Stand Down, as well as for Operation Thank You. Uh, the breakfast that we do and due to the cancellation of those events this year because of COVID, we do have the, uh, budget available to meet these needs. We're recommending option one. We have no comments, uh, and no speakers on this item.
Commissioner Maddox, followed by Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Maddox.
Move option one.
We have a motion. Commissioner Matt, Proctor, you seconded that? Okay. Any discussion? Okay, I, I just wanted to point out, to shout out to Schenckton. I had one of the veterans in town pull me aside and say, that's Schenckton Lamy. He's the best thing you guys have going and he's done a nice job. And this in particular, which is a, you, you think about, uh, the year some of y'all were here. I know Commissioner Proctor was when we got rained out of our Veterans Day Parade, if you remember that. And we decided not to have it. And that was not a real popular decision when it didn't rain very hard. So we've come a long way. So Schenckton, thanks for your hard work. Um, all in favor, favor the motion as presented, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously by my count. Thank you. Next up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 19, Commissioner seeks the board approval of the Habitat Conservation Plan, uh, for the 200 acres of Upper Lake Lafayette, lake bottom owned by the county. Uh, the plan was prepared by the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Committee as directed by the board back on May 12th. Uh, additionally, community groups such as the Big Ben Sierra Club, the Audubon Society and the Buck Lake Alliance were engaged uh, to review the plan and provide feedback. A detailed analysis of the plan calls for a combination of herbicide treatments, prescribed burns and mechanical treatments on a recurring and rotational basis, commissioners. It's anticipated that in the first year of the herbicide treatments will cost approximately $25,000, followed by a second year of prescribed burning, which could be contracted out for approximately $20,000 and will be addressed in the next year's, uh, budget process, uh, and, and will work, uh, as far as that timing is concerned. We have one speaker on this item and we received no other written comments on this item. I see that we, uh, we thought we had one speaker, we had one speaker registered, but they're not, not with us, commissioners. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we are recommending, uh, options one and two, and I'll hand it back to you.
All right. I have Commissioner Maddox, followed by Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Maddox, you're up.
Move options one and two.
We have a motion. We have a second by Commissioner Lindley. Commissioner Dozier, you're up next. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm not sure if this needs to be part of the motion, but I will start with this. In the item, it references bringing back the stormwater agenda item on the alternatives um, and innovative technology on November 17th. That's our reorganization day. I talked to the county administrator about this yesterday and suggested we move that item to December, um, giving us more time and freeing up reorg day, quite frankly. Um, can we add that to the motion?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Commissioner Maddox, I'm fine with that. Commissioner Lindley? Yeah, okay, I'm.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, no, sir, that I wanted to start there.
Okay, go ahead.
Because that would be part of the motion and I'm, I support the motion. Um, it, this is a fantastic item. Ms. County Administrator, to you, uh, the stormwater team, uh, the folks, um, at FWC who drafted it, who worked with us to draft it, and all of the partners from Sierra Club, Buck Lake Alliance and others who have taken the time to review this. Um, we started this a year ago, um, when there was a suggestion that we should work with Tall Timbers to do a controlled burn. Um, and I know some of you, I believe some of you have taken a tour of the future conservation area around Lake Lafayette and the Falls Chase area. It is quite remarkable to see how many invasive plants have already been removed and how the lake is going to hopefully be rejuvenated in that area and the habitat is really coming back. So they've already gotten a great start and I want to compliment, this is one of those areas where, um, we see the neighborhood, we see environmental groups, and we see the developers all coming together and, and with the county, quite frankly, and all of our staff to work through these issues and come up with a great plan moving forward. Um, this is not something we see all the time, but I, I want to compliment the, that incredible effort. This is just a start and, um, I think the water quality issue as described in here, that this is a habitat restoration plan, not a water quality plan. That's really why I, the stormwater issue was referenced. And, um, I look forward to that conversation because we need to focus on the water quality as well. The last thing, Mr. Chair, is, um, this plan works in tandem with the city. That we own about two thirds of the lake bottom, they own about a third. And I hope that we will work with them, um, on management. It's not gonna do us any good to manage invasives on 200 plus acres and leave them on 100 plus acres. Um, I, I think what I'm hearing from the city or through some of those other participants, um, is very encouraging. And I'm really excited that we may have a land management plan for all of Lake Lafayette, for the upper portion rather. Um, and that's gonna help us as we move further into water quality. So that's it, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to say thank you. This has been a year of work, um, and really good progress. I should say six months since May, but a year of conversation to get us to this point. Um, and I look forward to moving forward. Thanks.
Great. We have a motion and a second. I would echo, I did take the tour out there. It was very informative and very interesting. A beautiful piece of property, beautiful part of the town. So all in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? By my count, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Commissioners, you recall, uh, at your, um, July 14th meeting, that the board considered the bid award that's before you again tonight and voted to postpone action until staff could evaluate alternatives and bring an item back to you for consideration. The further analysis, uh, included in the item, uh, before you tonight advises that, uh, the additional alternatives that were explored in the interim did not result in significant cost savings. And as such, uh, the item, uh, before you, um, again, has been budgeted, uh, over the last seven years. And at this time, staff recommends proceeding with options one and two. We have no speakers on this item, but did receive one comment, uh, which was distributed, posted, and of course will be made part of the public record. We're recommending options one and two.
Commissioner Maddox, followed by Commissioner Dozier.
Move options one and two.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second from Commissioner Proctor, I believe. Commissioner, Commissioner Maddox, do you have anything else? Okay.
No, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to thank staff for the hard work. I know this came to us a few times and, uh, Commissioner Dozier also did some work on it. I think we ended up in the right place. Uh, this is gonna be a gem for those folks out there and who, and everybody needs parks right now. So, um, thank you so much, staff, for the work. And I, I gladly make the motion for us to move forward on it. I think it also will give some much needed work to some industries out there that need work and provides economic development in our county. So I'm proud of it. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we've got Commissioner Dozier, followed by Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I appreciate that, Commissioner Maddox. So to wonderful folks and, uh, chairs, yes, we went through a lot of conversations, uh, about passive parks and ball fields. Um, the reason why, and that was back in 19 and before, and this County Administrator, you and your staff, uh, Parks and Rec facilities, everyone that public works, did a great job working through this. Um, if you remember, we put this on hold, I asked for it in June, um, July, rather, kind of might have surprised a couple of you in light of the budget deficit that we had. And just wanted to wait and make sure things didn't get worse and that we could have accomplished this project. I am also very happy it's moving forward. Um, I did want to take this opportunity just to note that when we initiated this, um, more than a year ago, we also talked about, um, the basketball courts. I had gone and visited with a, a bunch of folks who were playing basketball down there and we needed some improvements on the courts. And one young man in particular stood out who had already been in contact with, uh, our Parks and Rec department and was very excited that we were hearing, um, their needs as well as Little League. So we got an update and I just wanted to compliment our staff, Ms. County Administrator. Um, new lights, new court, new goals. And, um, I know you still got a little bit more to do, but the basketball courts are, are improved and that's fantastic. So, um, chairs is looking good. We invite you all to come out. It's a good time in the district. And Mr. Chair, that was because I missed saying that Lake Lafayette is in the district, which you would have said had you been making those comments. So need to be, need to be quicker on that. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Proctor.
Chairman, I want to ask staff if, um, on this background, does this park have a bathroom or in a concession stand? Um, what, what's the status? Because there was a lot that, uh, you all were trying to get the cost, um, decent. And among the things that were removed was a concession, the bathroom, a loop road, uh, some landscaping, some gutters, all like that. And we went through in our own staff to do the, uh, um, landscaping and all, all like that. Are, have we left out those major things or not?
No, you're, you're right, Commissioner Park, uh, Proctor. This park has, uh, does have existing bathrooms and concession stands. The build out, uh, which, uh, we were formerly, um, um, uh, planning for, uh, provided for additional, uh, concession stand facilities. I'm not, not sure about bathrooms, but, yeah, but, but, um, but it does have, uh, the park does have existing bathrooms and concession stands. Um, and, um, again, the item before you, um, reflects, uh, and the budget before you reflects an awful lot of, of, um, value engineering, uh, that went through just to get the project. Um, I'd like to say within budget, not quite within budget, but with, uh, within an acceptable, uh, budget range, uh, for us to be able to proceed forward.
Well, I was gonna say that you all know that I have, um, uh, I, I don't like, you know, it's a poor frog that don't, 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 don't croak over his own pond. And I always do when it comes to our staff. I'm extremely proud. This is a project where I, I believe that we initially, um, in the specs of what we thought, our guesstimations were a lot lower than the actual, um, um, costs were going to be. It almost looks like to the tune of 33%. We under, um, guesstimated what it would take. But I, I just want to say that this project has taken a long time. It reminds me of the Woodville Sewer Project, which we finally put some money on the other day and get down to some real money. And, um, this is no, no put down the Commissioner Dozier's leadership and all. But sometimes a district commissioner needs y'all at large commissioners to weigh in and to push this project. It just took a long time to get a ball field, a little old ball field. And we're gonna be dealing with Wilani, I mean, just giving a contrast. Some areas of our county can just get big time attention and some parts of our community can't get a ball field. So I am just grateful and thankful for the ball field to come to fruition. Uh, we were a little lax. I think a female is doing the work, female company, uh, is the, is the contractor. Uh, with only, no MBE other than this, the female contractor. And, um, that's good for change and we give applause, uh, to that effort. But I think that in our community, when we see areas that is getting all the bells and whistles and other areas ain't getting, take 20 years to get a park. Uh, I'm asking the bigs. Um, y'all, at, 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 at your altitude as our at-large commissioners can help a lot, put your shoulder to it, this took too long to do. And in taking this long, the cost done gone way up. We have to be more attentive and, uh, close the deal and all like that. So congratulations, Commissioner Dozier, to the good people out there and chairs. Um, you need know that many years ago, and even still, uh, the good Proctor name is associated uh, in that community called Chairs. So I'm grateful to see a park and thank you, staff, for bringing this baby in for a landing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. I have nobody else to speak. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Well done. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 21, Commissioners, uh, seeks the board's consideration of appointment of assistance to Tourist Development Council. Option one, uh, reflects, uh, the eligible applicant interested in serving. There are no speakers or written comments on this item.
Commissioner Maddox. And, uh, I got a motion, Commissioner Maddox. Can you second it? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I want to discuss for real brief, what, what is it that we want the Tourist Development Council Board to be? What is the philosophic driver of this particular, uh, thingy? And are, are we acquiring the kind of, uh, folk who, um, actually fulfill whatever that mission objective might be?
Let me, let me, let me take. Commissioner Proctor, I'm the liaison for the board for the TDC. Let me take a shot at this. W- w- we did a billion dollars worth of economic impact last year in Leon County with tourism, which is unheard of. And frankly, my hat's off to Carrie for the job she's done. So the goal is to do the same thing as soon as we can. So it's gonna be a little bit of digging ourselves out, but we are a, a destination that plays well into the recovery because we are a drive destination, we're a regional drive destination. So a lot of people aren't gonna be getting on planes, certainly not cruise ships anytime soon. So the sense is that we will be in the catbird seat. So, um, and I don't know if that answers your question, I'm just, as much as I'm just kind of making a statement here.
Well, you, you told it from your perspective of what you, you know, but is there something, uh, outside? Uh, not saying that your, 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 your perspective doesn't embrace the total concept. When we say TDC, I know that some years ago when, um, Mr. Charles, uh, Mr. Charles Wright was running the TDC, uh, it was a certain kind of bird. Uh, I, I recognize that the, um, it, it, the, uh, evolution of it to Carrie Post's leadership, uh, it's sort of a different kind of, uh, bird. And, um, I'm, I'm just curious as to where we are, uh, with respect to where, what it was and where it is and what's the, um, game plan moving forward. But we can, we can save that for our, um, retreat. And, um, like I said, it's somewhat of a philosophic nature. I think, Mr. Chairman, you, you, you know very well, uh, that people will likely, uh, we'll put it like this, the airlines is asking for $28 billion because nobody's flying. So if people are driving, how do we reshape or do we take into account the regionality of Tallahassee as a come to spot? Um, uh, the professor from TCC said that people come to Tallahassee to look at the statue. Um, and that even back in 1882, it was a tourist attraction. My God. So I'm curious as to what TDC is, is doing. And I love to hear about it, um, at the retreat. My God. So I'm curious as to what TDC is doing. And I love to hear about it at the retreat, if the retreat is held at a site that's not a former slave plantation. I thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. We have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposition? Motion carries. I think that's it for general business, isn't it?
That concludes the general business.
Okay. We've got, we'll do Commissioner comments here real quick, but let me just, I mean, we're at 10 after 5. We have a hard start at 6. So I would just ask that we don't let this wind on too long. We got a pretty big meeting in front of us based on some of the comments we've gotten. So I'll just start with Hollywood Squares here as I see it. Commissioner Dozier, comments for the good of the order? Anything you need to bring up?
Yes, sir. You got me there. This is the first time we've had comment time and a potential break since I think we started virtual meetings. So yes, this is good. I've got just a couple of issues I wanted to bring up, and I'm pulling up my notes here. So first, wanted to go back to a comment that we received on unagenda items. And I didn't bring this up in our COVID discussion, but it does deal with emergency shelters for our homeless in our community and some of the challenges that are being faced right now due to our emergency shelters having been closed and not everyone's qualifying for the hotel rooms. I've talked to the County Administrator about this very briefly, but we did institute, and correct me, Mr. County Administrator, if I get the name wrong, the work group, the homeless work group, was that back in April or May, right at the start of this process, to really coordinate our efforts to keep folks safe and protect the public health. So based on what you told me earlier, Ms. County Administrator, it sounds like our team is working with the providers and they're looking at various options and also reflecting on cold night shelters as we move into the winter. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I would just say, and I don't think we need a motion, but I would love to hear an update on that at some point, particularly because we don't have a meeting until November and the temperatures will certainly change before then. There is a risk in congregant shelters. That's why the Carney Center isn't actively hosting folks right now, housing folks right now. But there's also a risk with the temperatures and there is an impact. Commissioner Minor, forgive me, but one of the areas that has come to my attention is in District 3 out near I-10, that we're seeing a lot of folks congregate around that area. And I'm sure you've gotten calls as some of the rest of us have. So I hope that we can start to address and provide some other means to support these folks, even though we're still dealing with the public health challenges of COVID. Ms. County Administrator, you don't need any further direction. You've got it. Is that correct?
I've got it. Just to say that there is a lot of work going on with our existing providers in that area of emergency shelters, and we will bring back that information for you.
Okay. Thank you for that. The second item, Mr. Chair, I, this is, this is one that is going to be a struggle for the commission to tackle. And I don't envy asking our staff to bring us back an agenda item on broadband access, internet access in the rural area of our county. Actually, I would say any part of the county that doesn't currently have access. Thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Principal Jackson. I'm sure we've all heard from a lot of our constituents, particularly since March, but even before that, that there are areas of the county that struggle or don't have any access to internet, much less broadband. We heard from one constituent this week who is near the Jefferson County line and the costs are astronomical. So this has also been on my mind because it is part of the Suncoast Parkway Task Force. Our final report is actually due to the governor very soon. And the promise of broadband is part of that statute, actually. And so we've taken a deep dive in the last few months, had a few presentations from the industry. This isn't an easy fix and it's certainly not something that the county, a service the county would provide. But, Mr. County Administrator, what my question here is, I think we do need to understand the lay of the land, what providers we have available, particularly when we're at a county line situation, whether it's Gaston, Jefferson, or Ocala, and find out what we have, see if there's a way to find out what the gaps are, and look for innovative solutions. Things are moving quickly in some of the technology. And I'm really tired, as I'm sure most of you are, of telling constituents, this is not a service the county provides, the state regulates utilities, there's nothing we can do. If we distill this and we find that there's nothing the county can necessarily do, I say we kick it up to the state. We have to address this issue. The last thing I want to say is I did have a conversation with one of our colleagues from Ocala, and there may be a way for, say, our four county region to look at this issue collectively, if we need kind of an economy of scale. I wonder if there are some options there. So I'm going to leave it there, Mr. Chair. Ms. County Administrator, I said a lot in that, but I'm just going to make a motion for an agenda item that looks at our broadband and internet capacity in the county, where our gaps are, and allows us to have a conversation about any options, including a legislative request moving forward.
Sir, second. I see Commissioner Maddox has seconded it. Any other discussion? Okay, Commissioners, all in favor of the motion as presented by Commissioner Dozier signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposition? Looks to me like the motion carries. Okay, Commissioner Dozier, has that got it for you?
Mr. Chair, I think that is it. Although I will say, we do have a long meeting today and we will not see each other again. We will see, we'll have a workshop, but not another commission meeting before the election. I hope everyone votes. And I want to give a shout out to our supervisor of election and all of his staff. I'm kind of stealing what Commissioner Minor normally does in comment time, but figured I'd pick it up since you went to me first. They are working double time right now, as are our volunteers. And the poll worker volunteers are about to come in for early voting. And just want to thank all of them for their hard work this year. That's it, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Okay, Commissioner Minor, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I'll be really quick. So I know we've got a long this evening coming up. But I wanted to thank everyone involved with conducting the cross-country events on October 2nd and 3rd. That report was in consent on today's agenda. But judging by that report, I mean, it was really well done. And just want to thank everybody involved in putting that off, putting that on. I just want to acknowledge that. It looked like it was a really good series of events and really optimistic about that going forward. Wanted to, Commissioner Dozier, thank you very much for bringing up the issues along North Monroe. One of the things, as a district commissioner, I probably get more calls of concern about the state of North Monroe, not specifically about the issue you brought up, but just general, more calls and complaints about that area than any other part in the district. So I just, I want to, over the coming weeks and months, I'm going to be coming up with, talking to a lot of folks within that part of my district and coming up with some ideas on what we can do. Because if you talk to people who live along those neighborhoods, they'll tell you that they feel that that area, North Monroe and the surrounding neighborhoods are starting to slip visually, from an aesthetics point of view. And that's a big concern for a lot of people that live in District 3. So just want to kind of put that on your radar. It's something that is a high priority for, for me, serving the folks that live along or near North Monroe. And I was disappointed that, next thing, I was disappointed we had the, we had to reschedule the affordable housing workshop. I've been doing a lot of prep for that. But I understand the reasons why. Shinkton and his team, with regard to Leon Cares, are doing a tremendous job, working very hard, helping a lot of people that need COVID relief. So I want to thank Shinkton. And while I'm disappointed, we have to wait until March for the Affordable Housing Workshop. That's going to be a really good opportunity for us to tackle some hard issues. So with that, last thing I want to say, go vote. Just to springboard off of what Commissioner Dozier said, early voting starts Monday, October 19th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, I think at most of the early voting locations, and continues until the third day before the election. So with Supervisor Mark Early and his team, they're doing a really good job making sure that everyone in Leon County has a chance to go vote early if they wish, or they can, of course, drop off their mail-in ballot at one of those locations, or in the mail if they wish to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Jackson, all the way from Fort Braden, come on down.
Hey, thank you. I don't have anything except for to say ditto to Commissioner Dozier's comments. If anything has been demonstrated during this time of distance learning, I think that the digital divide is alive and well and that we have got to find a way to reach more. I don't think we'll ever reach all, but anything that we can do in a partnership with anyone, or any research that we can do on our end to enhance those opportunities is going to be something valuable for the economically disadvantaged. I'm looking forward to a robust workshop tonight. That's all I have, folks. Carry on.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Lindley.
Good dinner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say one thing, which a lot of us participated this past week with Youth Leadership Tallahassee students. And it was really invigorating and fun and funny at times. And I think we just have a lot of great talent coming along to be leaders around here in the next coming years. So that was, thanks a lot for the opportunity for that. As for voting, Commissioner Maddox and I are on your canvassing board team and the Dropbox is out at, out at the Election Supervisor's Office. I've been out there a few times and it's just streaming with people voting early and coming out there. So that's, I think, going very smoothly. And boy, do the people in our elections office work hard. They are just diligent, scrupulous, into every minute detail. And I really appreciate their work. So without further ado, I know we've got a big night ahead. So good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lindley. All right, Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. The first thing is, since I, well, I would like for agenda item to come back to us if needed, for a budget amendment to host the 4 through 8A FHSAA football championships here in Leon County. That will come back on the 17th meeting is when I requested for it to come back. That's my motion. If needed.
I would say, do we need a motion?
No, no.
Okay, I would second that, too.
Mr. Chairman, when I joined the sports council, one of the biggest things I had, because I actually played the state championship in North Carolina, was wondering why we never got to see the football state championships up here. Why were they always in Orlando? And I tasked staff with having the state consider us for their football championships. And last year, we did the 1 through 3A. Staff did an absolutely amazing job, so much so that they said it was the best run championship they've ever seen in the past, they've seen in the past 20 years. So I'm so proud of a man and her staff for what they did there. So much so that they, they left Daytona and asked us, could we host the 4 through 8A? Now, we will have not just 1A, 2A, 3A, but we will have 1 through 8A football championships played here. That's exciting for us. I know that they will have all the precautions necessary as far as COVID is concerned, but thank you for the agenda item, if needed, for, for us to take up a budget amendment item at the 17th, Mr. Chair. That's my motion.
All right. So we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on Commissioner Maddox's motion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposition? Good motion. Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Second part, Mr. Chair. I know I was a bit dogmatic about policy earlier. I just, again, I just wanted to make sure that we, that our public understands that we, we take policy very seriously and that we want to respect our own. We've all sat in that chair, I think everybody except for Rigga, sat in that chair, and made the same mistake of, you know, not doing the policy about the motion the second before discussion, all that kind of stuff. But we're in a day and time now where people, where people are really, really looking at how much we're holding ourselves accountable for that stuff. And so I'm going, from here on out, I am going to be that guy when it comes to the way we run our meetings, the problematic piece of it, that respects those pieces of policy that we have in place for orderly meeting. We have to understand, that's what, that's what they're there for, to make sure we have an orderly meeting. And I'm not saying they're all right, but they're exactly what, what past commissions felt like we should have been doing. And so with that, I only have one question, Madam Attorney, is what is the, whose, whose policy dictates how, how we run our comp plan? Is it, is it the presiding officer or is it a different set of policies there?
Go ahead.
Thank you. It's a good question. Commissioner Maddox and I was just thinking about that in the context of the earlier discussion. On its face, policy number 01-05 applies to the meetings of the Board of County Commissioners. So I think it's frankly unclear. It's my understanding, and if someone could correct me if I'm wrong, but that the county and the city host meetings on a back and forth basis, is that accurate? Well, then I think that it would be up to that body to determine the rules and procedure that would apply to those meetings on a going-forward basis.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, go ahead.
Well, I was going to ask, is this in light of what we've got coming up tonight, you want to make?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make sure that, again, I know it's going to be a long meeting, but I'm all about us trying to be as early as we can. I just want to make sure we understand the rules of engagement when we have this meeting. If it's our ruling, then, Madam Attorney, the last question about this is, if it is our ruling, does the motion that I made earlier that gives the Chair consent, is that adequate for us to continue to operate in the way we've been operating? Or do we have to make another motion for public hearing?
Go ahead.
I would say that it continues to govern the public hearing that has been scheduled, all the public hearings. But for purposes of workshop, that is potentially a different matter and would be something that we need to come before that collective body.
Know that when the, when the workshop comes, I'll be asking the same question about how we're going to govern there. Commissioner Delos, this is your, I guess, your last meeting as a board meeting as Chair. You have had, you have run the gamut, man. You have actually, us being in the chambers, us going through COVID. I mean, nobody has had a rougher time at Chair than you have, or more of adjustment as a Chair as you have. And I think you've done an absolute magnificent job. Commissioner Minor, as you, if things go as we have traditionally, stepping to the Chair role, I implore you to, to, to respect those policies put in place and run your meetings in such a way, better than, I guess, the rest of us have. Because again, we have not done it that way in the past. But I'm looking for a new president moving forward, that we either do it that way or we make a decision about changing policy that we're not going to do it that way. Because again, we expect our constituents to respect the three-minute rule. They should expect us to respect our own policy when it comes to rules of engagement procedure for our board meetings. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, we have, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. We got Commissioner Jackson, you wanted to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I'll reserve the comments for your chairmanship until November 17th. You don't get off that easy.
Thank you. Commissioner Maddox. Yes, sir. Commissioner Maddox.
Commissioner Lindley, my media mom, my at-large member. It has been an absolute pleasure to share the at-large space with you. Your last board meeting, congratulations, you made it. I'm going to miss you so much, your level of clarity and patience with. made it. I'm going to miss you so much, your, your level of clarity and patience with us at times, and even the way you have stood up in, in issues when you need to step, stand up in issues is inspiration to me, and I'm sure the rest of the Commission, we're going to miss you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to add that.
Yep. All right, Commissioner Proctor.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Commissioner, Commissioner Dozier, you wanted to weigh in?
I just don't want it to be lost here that the reason you're not hearing a lot of accolades and compliments for Commissioner Lindley, I'm glad you went ahead and said that, Commissioner Maddox, but you will be back with us on November 17th, and I guess this is a silver lining. We will actually be back in chambers that night. So it gives me an opportunity to thank the county administrator for his email about in-person meetings. We know the Governor's executive order is expiring, so it will be very nice to see all of you, and I am grateful we will be able to see you one last time in person in chambers before you leave us and go hang out with your granddaughter and everyone else. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Okay, Commissioner Proctor, it's your, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam County Attorney, one of the things that confuses me is I anticipate, and I didn't seek your advice about this, but you know, the Wilani art that we're dealing with tonight, a part of, a part of that area up there, the city limits is in an area where there is no urban service area line, and the city limits line goes beyond the urban service area. Opposite that, on the south end of the community, we have the urban services line going further than the city limit. It's the opposite thing. And you can't, we can't get the city limit to come down there and even run up to Capital Circle and beyond because they're gerrymandering and don't want black voters in the city election. It's just the opposite of what we're preparing to go do here tonight with this Wilani art. And I just need your clarification tonight on my question about, does the chicken come before the egg, or is the egg before the chicken? And how does the city have a limit well beyond urban services area and put a city limit outside and well beyond urban services? That's at the heart of my level of, of concern, in part, tonight for our future meeting. I want to thank county administrative events long, and, you know, there's been a little blowback brewing about, but, you know, the Lakers won the championship the other night. Shout out to LeBron and Anthony Davis, the Lakers, and they got about four or five players who are coming open, and other teams definitely want their services. And I just want to say to the whole wide world that you all didn't get a chance to see the report that we received on consent tonight as to the active report, the work that was done, the volume of work, and the most trying of circumstances. Many people are saying that the work that was done by this NBA team in the bubble, playing under conditions of three-month commitment away from home, away from fans, away from everyone in Orlando, and to get into, make that commitment, was probably the toughest, most challenging feat ever performed in sports in terms of the championship, how the grind occurred. I believe that this past year, our county administrator and our county administration has had to do work in probably the most unique moments ever, ever, that any county administrator has ever worked in prior. And I hope you don't have to repeat that in the coming months ahead. So I gave our county attorney what y'all saw, I gave him, and I'm standing up beside it, and I don't want nobody anywhere in America to come and try to take our county administrator, and I gave our county attorney the grades and the report card, which, in my opinion, they earned this year. So the money that I gave them and I supported giving them is based on performance, is based on their contract and all like that, and some people have better contracts than others. So I appreciate them. They've done a hell of a job, and I'm standing by every word, everything I said about them. We want to keep them here, and I hope that we can. On October 24, I'll be hosting a farm share at the Cox Stadium out there at the fairground at the stadium. You need to get there early, folk. It won't be around if you ain't there soon. Come sooner than later, starting at 8:00 a.m. in the morning. And it goes fast, and Congressman Lawson indicates that he's going to be there to speak and say hello to everyone. Let me say to my county administrator, I'm getting a whole bunch of calls on how difficult the form is, the Leon County, Leon County, Leon County cares, thank you, cares, but that form is seeming like we don't care. That form, from what I'm hearing, I haven't filled one out, but that form is long. People who got $1,500 before are being barred from getting up to $20,000, which we approved. Now, we, and some thought that they would get 18.5 to follow, but the street is reporting, and I hadn't talked to you about this, but the street is reporting that if you got $1,500 and you was a black business, that's all you're going to get, even though the county has upped that range to $20,000. I think that we need to have a come-in-the-Jesus meeting on that. I'm asking for flexibility on that. I am surely pleading, please, Lord, please, God, do not send any money back to nobody when there are needs here, and if we have to revise a form to get more people, it would be just a shame on politicians that we couldn't give away money when we had it to do. So, events, I'm asking to meet with you, our staff, a couple other people want to get in the conversation on this, and we'll talk about it later, but, I mean, there are some issues that come by, this issue tonight, Wilani art, I mean, I'm not going to get anybody to call me tomorrow, one way or the other. It really don't matter on the South Side. But on this right here, this Leon Cares, I'm getting kilt on this right here, and I need to be able to reconcile, do we really intend for people to get $20,000 or not? If we said they can get $20,000, why can't they get $20,000? So we got to clear that up, because I got to keep serving as a commission. I can't do it if my credibility, our integrity, and the sheet of paper don't meet what we're actually doing. So our talk and our walk must be consistent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. Sister Lindley, we're going to have a toast, and I'm sure some are going to roast you, but I'm going to toast you at our next, our next get-together. So thank you so much for your services. I appreciate you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Okay, Madam County Attorney, I think I've gotten to everybody. Did I miss it? I think, yeah, okay. Anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to thank the continuing hard work and effort of everyone in the county attorney's office, everyone that's working at capacity, has been for a while, and they're continuing to do really good work. So again, just want to shout out to the folks in the office. Also, want to say thank you to the Commissioners, not only for approving the notice that Commissioner Proctor just mentioned, but also for the feedback and evaluation. I take all of that heart, the good, and the areas for improvement as well. I know that I can improve, and I want to. Thank you for, I enjoy the work.
Right. Okay, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just a, a quick technical note, Commissioners, as the 6 o'clock hour draws nearer, and with the public meeting, or the public hearing, rather, and workshop, I would just want to ask that you not disconnect. This is the same call that you'll be on. If you can pause and mute when we get to that point in time, we don't want to lose you. And so if, again, if you could not disconnect, but simply pause and mute, that would be great. Again, like our county attorney said, appreciated, Commissioners, once again, your feedback on the annual evaluation. Very, very much appreciative. And Commissioner Proctor, you, we'll meet, and you will be able to feel very confident about the process that we have in place, and all the work that's going into making sure that that is a very simple, straightforward, and seamless process on the Cares dollars. So look forward to that as well. With that, Mr. Chairman, I hand it back to you.
Good. All right, a couple of quick comments, and then we'll break. Again, track meet, I heard the same thing Commissioner Minor brought up. It went off very well. I got half a dozen phone calls from parents and spectators, or people that got a chance to participate that were, A, blown away at how great the park is that we've developed out there, and B, how well, the great job that Lee and her team did as far as spacing and making sure everything worked, so people felt safe. So hats off. Get out and vote, vote early. I'm not going to say vote often, just vote early. I'd like to ask, or I'd like somebody to tee up a motion, if that's okay, for proclamation recognizing vascular ailers, Dan Loes syndrome month in, coming up. So if somebody would make that motion, I would appreciate it. We have a motion by Commissioner Lindley, second by Commissioner Maddox. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. I echo the comments about YLT. I've got a chance, as Commissioner Lindley did, to be on that call. And as a proud graduate of Leadership Tallahassee, who actually watched YLT come into formation, it's really inspiring to see these young kids get engaged, and how active and how, you know, it was a great experience, and so I'm looking forward to more great things. And lastly, and I know we'll do this formally, but Commissioner Lindley, I can't tell you what an honor it's been to work with you, and I beg you every meeting to, please don't go and stay. So I'll do the same tonight. You will be sorely missed. You have been a real addition to the group. You have brought a lot of stability to it, let's just say that. And you're thoughtful, and your reasoned approach, so.
Thank you. Might be illegal to stack the Commission, though, and stick around, so. I'm an eight-member board, no, thank you.
Look, we waive the rules, we can do that. All right, with that, we take a break. We're back on at 6 o'clock. Thank you all for your patience. Talk to you in a minute.